This is Troy, your host. We are live and recording.
Thank you, Troy. Good morning and good afternoon, everybody. I hope you have survived the bitter cold outside. The sun is a little bit surprising for all of us, but it's certainly a nice day to be with so many friends here for a very special ceremony. Before I call the meeting to order, I would like to invite up Pastor Vandevere for the invocation.
Let's pray. Father, we thank you so much for this afternoon, this privilege that you have given us to come and to just, Lord, to be reminded once again as we begin that, Lord, you are the giver of all good things. And, Lord, you have established societies and government, Lord, for the benefit of your people. And we pray that we would understand the times in which we live and the grace which we have been given at all levels, Lord. We pray that you would continue to shower us with this grace, that you would give our leaders wisdom, Lord, that you would cause them to make those decisions that are according to you, to your word, for the benefit of all. And, Lord, we pray that you would just bless and guide this time, that there would be peace, that there would, Lord, be goodwill, that there would again be wisdom and direction. And we give you this time now, Lord. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thank you so much, Pastor. We always appreciate you being here with us. Before I call the meeting to order, I wanted to indicate that our amazing Chair, Commissioner George Teal, does have a very well-planned and excused absence following his victory. He will be joining us for a second term this next year. So I don't know if he's watching remotely, but maybe we could give him a big round of applause. So with that, I'll call the meeting to order of the Tuesday, November 19, 2024 Business Meeting. If you'll all rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. Counsel, do you have certification of our agenda today?
Yes, sir. The County Attorney's Office reviewed all items on the agenda. The Board has appropriate jurisdiction over these matters.
Great. Thank you so much. And do any commissioners have any disclosures for items on this agenda today?
I have none. Thank you.
Thank you, and I have none. With that, we'll move on to Item 2, Ceremonies and Proclamations. And we'll begin with a lot of the fund that I think many of you are here for, the 2024 Philip S. Miller Grant Distribution. And we have Kim Smith, Community Resource Program Manager, Coordinator, sharing for staff. Hi, Kim.
Commissioners, Kim Smith, representing Community Services Staff. The Board approved a memorandum of understanding on August 23, 2022, transferring administration of the Philip S. Miller Grant from Douglas County to the Douglas County Community Foundation, or DCCF. DCCF provided recommendations for $135,000 in 2024 Philip S. Miller Grant funds to the Board of County Commissioners. This occurred at a work session on October 29, 2024, and the Board approved the recommendations. DCCF recommended funding $67,500 for 15 applicants providing emergency assistance, suicide prevention, mental health, and services for vulnerable residents. Four organizations that serve older adults were also recommended to receive $67,500. Organizations receiving a grant award were invited here today to be recognized by the Board of County Commissioners. This concludes my presentation, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have. DCCF's Director of Development, Kirsten Swanson, is here today, along with several DCCF Board members, and the checks are available for distribution.
Great. Thank you, Kim. Any questions for staff?
I have none. Thank you.
And I have no questions, other than a huge debt of thanks to you and Jennifer for all of your hard work coordinating with the Community Foundation. And at this time, I'd be pleased to invite our Community Foundation Development Director up, if you'd like to say anything.
Thank you, guys, for... And I just want to say a big thank you to the Commissioners for your partnership in this. Thank you to Kim and her team as well. And a really big thank you to the Douglas County Community Foundation Board. Your work is inspiring. And what's also inspiring is the amazing grants that you've been giving to the community. So really big congratulations to all of you that are here. We see you making impact in Douglas County, and we're thankful and we're really excited to see what you guys do with the funds.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kirsten. Anyone else from the community want to make a comment before we come down and present some checks? Well, I'll just add, it is an incredible honor to be before the Douglas County Community Foundation. Your incredible contribution to our community has just grown exponentially each year. We are deeply honored for the opportunity that you've given us to partner with you to elevate our SURF, our Community Emergency Relief Fund, and ensure that those in our community that may face a significant crisis have those resources in the event of something unforeseen. So again, tremendous thanks to each of you for contributing your time, your energy, and your talent, and helping us distribute these important Philip S. Miller Grants out to the community. So at this time, we do have a stack of envelopes. And Commissioner, if you'd like to join me down front, we will make the distribution.
And if you guys come up to receive your checks, if you could remain up here, we'd like to take a picture afterwards.
How about Castle Country Assisted Living?
So I have VFW Post 4266.
Aging Resources of Douglas County.
I have Southeast Counseling Center.
The Backpack Society.
I have Bridge of Hope.
Castle Rock Senior Activity Center.
I have the Parker Task Force.
Cherry Hills Community Church.
I have Step Seven Ministries.
Crisis Center.
I have Douglas County Christian Counseling.
The Help and Hope Center.
St. Vincent de Paul Ave Maria.
Integrated Family Community Services.
I have the Happy Crew.
Manor Resource Center.
And I have the Parker Senior Center.
Allen's Ranch Senior Center.
Don't spend it all in one place, Sandy Jones. Great. Well, I think if that's everyone, let's give everybody a big round of applause. Wow. No, that's your job now. And how about we have the entire Douglas County Community Foundation on up as well?
So as we thanked everybody here for receiving these checks, I think it's important for us to remember Mr. Philip Miller, who made all of this possible. Mr. Miller was a fabulous person, and person kind of minimizes who he was. But he started as a butcher, and he tried to get a loan from a bank to expand his operation, and the bank turned him down. And after that, he told himself he was going to fix that. So anytime somebody wanted to expand their business, they would be able to get a loan and make their business a reality. And so eventually, he moved to Castle Rock. His bank was here on Wilcox. And in the early 80s, when I was a state trooper here, I saw him walking down Wilcox with his briefcase. And my field training officer said, "You need to remember Mr. Miller, because he has made Douglas County what it is today." And when he passed away, he and his wife, Jerry, had no children. And he set aside an endowment of about $33 million. And twice a year, there are funds that are provided from that endowment to about 10 different organizations. It includes Douglas County, the Town of Castle Rock, Shriners Hospital, Children's Hospital. The Castle Rock Fire Department receives money. Douglas County High School receives money that's given as scholarships to students. The Fair Board receives funding. And so every year forever, Mr. Miller's love of Douglas County is remembered in how this money is given to organizations. And what we just dispersed here was the money that Douglas County is given. So this really is from Mr. Miller, and I think it's important that we all thank Mr. Miller and thank him for what he has bestowed on our population. So thank you, Mr. Miller.
Thank you for that, Commissioner. And it was interesting, not that long ago, Castle Rock benefited from the development of a new library for Douglas County. And the Board of County Commissioners visited with the Library Board to indicate that perhaps it would make sense to keep the name Miller on that library. And they were looking for some history, and we all said, "Well, there's a great book in your stacks." It's called Butcher, Banker, and Benefactor: His Life and Legacy in Douglas County. So that is available for anyone to review, and he is truly a tremendous example of leadership and positive collaboration with our community. With that, we are going to move to Item 2B, which is a resolution proclaiming the week of November 18, 2024, as Colorado Crash Responder Safety Week. We have Zeke Lynch, Assistant Public Works Director from Engineering, presenting for staff. Zeke?
Hello? Is that better? All right. Thank you so much. Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm Zeke Lynch, representing Public Works staff, and I'm joined by several people from our Douglas County Sheriff's Office. Gentlemen, would you like to introduce yourselves?
Sure. Jason Kennedy, Captain with Douglas County and Patrol Division.
Trace Warwick, Sergeant of the Traffic Unit.
Alan Stan, Lieutenant, Douglas County Sheriff's Office, Patrol Division.
Thank you, gentlemen. I'd like to start with just a quick preamble by saying, you know, here at Douglas County, we have the most incredible partnership between our Douglas County Public Works and our Sheriff's Office. We have monthly meetings with them where we meet to talk about safety on our roadways, speeding within our neighborhoods, and other issues that are affecting our residents. And we couldn't do what we do without the enforcement side of our county. And we so rely on them for targeted speed enforcement, response to crashes within our county, and everything else that they do for us. So before you today is a resolution proclaiming this week as Colorado Crash Responder Safety Week. And if it pleases the Board, I'd like to read that resolution in its entirety.
Yes, thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. A resolution proclaiming the week of November 18, 2024, as Colorado Crash Responder Safety Week. Whereas, law enforcement officers, firefighters, public service utility workers, emergency medical personnel, road crews, tow operators, conduct valuable and often lifesaving operations at the roadside. And whereas, these on-scene personnel provide a critical public service. And whereas, they are called to duty at all hours of the day and night in adverse weather conditions and end in a dangerous roadside environment. And whereas, Colorado responders use traffic incident management training and skills to safely and quickly clear scenes to improve the safety for all road users. Whereas, as of September 23, 2024, during this year, 28 first responders that were working on the roadway have been struck and killed, including 13 law enforcement officers, three fire EMS personnel, seven tow operators, one road safety professional, and four C-Dot workers. Whereas, one death is too many. And whereas, drunk, drugged, drowsy, distracted, and dangerous driving are a threat to our responder's safety. And whereas, all road users should do their part to keep everyone responding to traffic incidents on our highways safe by slowing down, moving over, and driving cautiously. And whereas, the state of Colorado has a move-over law requiring drivers to slow down and move over when approaching emergency vehicles, a tow truck, or a highway maintenance vehicle when their emergency lights are activated. And whereas, there is a need for Coloradans to be educated on the dangers of failing to abide by these laws. And whereas, the week of November 18 to 22 is recognized nationally as Crash Responder Safety Week. So at the discretion of the Board, therefore be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of the Douglas, of the County of Douglas, Colorado, hereby declares this week as Colorado Crash Responder Safety Week. Thank you.
Zeke, thank you very much for reading that. Any questions for staff?
Zeke, I don't remember doing this before. How long have we been celebrating this week? Do you know, or do any of you know?
I'm not certain of the history of this, but we have a great partnership also with our Colorado Department of Transportation. And the Governor has proclaimed this week as Safety Responders Week as well. So we thought it appropriate to join the state in this initiative.
I think it's very appropriate. You know, I spent many weeks, many nights, along with some of these guys, out on the roads in Douglas County as a state trooper. And I'll always remember on September 26, 1987, when I arrested a drunk hit-and-run driver who ran over a state trooper on Monument Hill and killed him. And just last week, November 6, a golden police officer was killed while he was investigating a crash on a state highway. And his FTO, his Training Officer, is the daughter of a law enforcement officer, friend of mine. So it's all too real for those of us who have or still do work on the highways. So thank you for what you do. It is a very dangerous job, and I don't think people really understand that it is the traffic. I think we lose more officers to traffic accidents than through any other means. So I think that this is really an important proclamation. So thank you all for being here and being part of this.
Thank you, Commissioner. And, you know, it's an incredible honor to have all of you here today. You know, the other nice thing about having served in the county for a little bit is you all are friends and colleagues. And I know each of you by name and the work that you do. I know it personally. And that coordination that Public Works has had with the Sheriff's Office is so significant. When it comes to all of the cameras and the ability to investigate those really important and tragic circumstances, Public Works was right there to ensure that that occurred, along with IT and all of you. So thank you so much for that, and I appreciate you reading the resolution. If you would indulge me, if we could just have a moment of silence for all of those crash responders? Thank you so much. With that, I will open it up for any citizen comment. Is there any citizen comment in the room? And certainly any of you gentlemen would like to speak, you're welcome to do that at this time.
If I may, Jason Kennedy, Captain with Douglas County. Commissioners, thank you so much. And I can't thank you enough for the partnership that we have. We do this as a team when we go out there. We need the community support, and we get the community support, and we love that. But we do it as a team. And for everyone that's been out there and risking their lives on that, I just beg the public, because this really is about education. It's about moving over. It's about giving us room to do our job so that those kind of instances, Commissioner Thomas, that you were speaking of, I was at that funeral just the other day, and it's heartbreaking, you know? And we don't want to see that again, you know? And we know we can make a difference when we get out there, and we can educate people. Get off your phones, give us space, and know that we're trying to keep things moving, all right? So thank you again for everything, and appreciate it.
Thank you so much for that. We had the honor of being with Sheriff Weekly earlier this last week, and he shared with us how much more the Douglas County Sheriff's Office is doing with regard to our highways. And we know the Colorado State Patrol, according to him, is looking to you all to provide that additional support. That's a big, heavy burden, and we really thank the Douglas County Sheriff's Office for stepping up in that regard. Any additional citizen comment? Okay. Any citizen comment online?
Thank you, Commissioner. I have no online comment.
Thank you, Troy. So with that, I'll close citizen comment and bring it back to the Board for any further discussion and/or motion.
I have a motion to approve a resolution proclaiming the week of November 18, 2024, as Colorado Crash Responder Safety Week.
And I'll second that motion. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that carries 2-0. If you'll stick around, I've been told by staff that we're going to do a photo.
I have a motion to approve the requests in all items A through P of the Consent Agenda.
And I will second that motion. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that carries 2-0. With that, we'll move on to Item 4, which is Citizen Comment, Organization Comment. At this time, you are welcome to comment about any topic other than those that appeared on today's agenda. This is an opportunity to share your thoughts and ideas with us. Please state your name and where you reside prior to making comments. You will have up to three minutes. Obscenity and any comments calling for criminal or violent action are prohibited. Commissioner comments, if any, will follow all citizen comments. Are there any citizen comments? Okay. Any citizen comment online?
No, sir. I have no online comment.
Okay, thank you, Troy. So with that, I'll close citizen comment and move on to Item 5, which is Commissioner Comment. Any Commissioner comments?
I do have a question. I was thinking when I missed the vote. I was wondering if it would be appropriate to put a signature block on the resolution we just did about the crash week for all three of us, or the two of us, since Commissioner Teal isn't here. But I would like to be able to sign that resolution, please.
And I think that's fine. Clerk, if we can make sure that that occurs? Thank you.
Thank you.
Any additional Commissioner comment?
You know, I would just like to say that in the last week, I have just found so much fun in watching videos of people on the internet doing the Trump Hump. And so I just think that Douglas County should be part of the celebration. I just wanted to put that on the record. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Thomas. Obviously, so many moving chairs on the deck at this point, and we are awfully excited in Douglas County to greet the future with optimism and collaboration with all those that we serve. I'll move on to other business. Any other business before us today?
No other business.
Any other business, Commissioner?
I have none. Thank you.
Okay. And then we'll move on to the County Manager. Anything for the County Manager?
I think today there is a 22-page report in your packet. Happy to answer any questions on that.
All right. Thank you, Doug. So with that, we -- the next business meeting will be held on Tuesday, December 10th, 2024, at 1:30 PM. We are adjourned.